Good morning, folks. How are you? Thanks for coming. Let me walk up to the microphone so AGP doesn't yell at me. I'm Jerry Gruber, your general manager, and I just wanted to welcome everybody and thank you for coming today. I appreciate you being a part of this process. Today, it's the Cambridge Community Services District Public Hearing to Receive Testimony on the Sustainable Water Facility Public Review Draft EIR October 11, 2016. So if you're here for another meeting, that's the purpose of this meeting. And so I'm just going to do introductions, and I'm going to turn it over to Glenn LaJoy, who is our consultant. So we have Glenn LaJoy from Michael Baker International and Rita Garcia from Michael Baker International, and they're the ones that we've been working with closely on the EIR. And then we have Monique Madrid, our Administrative Services Officer for the district, and then we have Bob Greshens. And so Glenn will explain how Monique is part of this process, and he'll touch on why Bob is a part of the process. And I'm going to excuse myself and turn it over to Glenn, and then I'm going to go sit back in the audience. It's nice not to sit up there for a change, so I'm going to let these guys handle it today. So again, thank you for coming. Really appreciate you being a part of this process, and we look forward to hearing your comments today. Thank you.
Good morning, Glenn LaJoy, Michael Baker International, friendly RBF consulting, been with the district, consulting with the district for about 27 years. And thank you for being here. This is an important step for the process. This is a public meeting to receive testimony regarding the draft environmental impact report for the sustainable water project. So I'm going to go through a couple things. It refers to a handout when we first came through the door. There's two items that are on the table. So we're here to receive testimony and comment regarding the environmental impact report. And so we're going to also provide a brief presentation. And the presentation is basically to walk you through what the document is all about. It's a big, fat document. It takes a little time to review, and there's a lot of information in there. So the public review period, the requirement per the state is 45 days for a draft environmental impact report, EIR, to be available for public review. The district has extended the timeframe to receive comments. The district is accepting comments through October 26, 5 o'clock that day. So please, we're welcoming testimony today, but also written comments up through October 26 are very important to us. This is a continued process. This is a draft environmental impact report. By no means is it complete. When we receive comments, we move into the next stage, which is preparation of a final EIR, final environmental impact report, which will be presented to the board for consideration and certification. So what the district is seeking to do is provide an opportunity for the public to not only submit written comments, as well as this meeting here to receive testimony. So the two handouts when you first came in the door, there's a comment card. So if anyone wishes to speak on the environmental impact report, please fill out the comment card and provide it to Monique, and Monique will collect the cards to move forward with the meeting. There's also a second handout, which kind of gives you a little structure about what the meeting entails. So let me walk you through that real quickly. So we're receiving testimony regarding questions and comments on the content of the draft environmental impact report. This is not a hearing to discuss the merits of the project, whether you like it, you don't like it, whether it should be approved, not approved. That is not in any way what we're considering here. It's nothing, quite frankly, we're interested in. We're interested in an environmental process that is a sound environmental process that provides information to the board for consideration of certifying a final EIR. And I'll walk you through those steps in just a moment. So we're not here to get into a debate, a discussion on the merits of the project. It is strictly on the environmental considerations and the contents of the draft environmental We are receiving testimony this morning. We've identified a three-minute timeframe, so three minutes for some may not be adequate, but the point of the whole matter is to basically provide you an opportunity to express your testimony. You may also provide it in writing, so if you have extensive comments, you may wish to highlight in that three-minute period your comments or your key considerations, and then follow it up in writing before October 26. Again, our next steps will be to assemble a final environmental impact report. All comments we receive, both the testimony today and the written comments through October 26, each and every comment is responded to in the final environmental impact report. So let me walk you through the slides here. This doesn't show up very well, so I apologize in terms of the visibility, but the point here is this is a process. So the bubbles, the blue bubbles basically show you the process leading to the green bubble, which is the final EIR, and then the district board will consider and certify the final EIR. So also, the arrows pointing up basically identifies a public process. We received testimony and comments when we started the process earlier this year, and then we're also receiving testimony today and through October 26. So it's a continued process. The goal line is the yellow bubble, which is the findings and resolution by the board. So we'll briefly, I'm going to walk you through the document and the structure of the document so you're more familiar with how it is put together. There's an introduction, which is basically identifies the purpose of an environmental impact report, so please take a look at that. This is referred to as a subsequent EIR, and this is terminology per the California Environmental Quality Act, which is a subsequent EIR. The district approved a water master plan environmental impact report in 2008, and it identified the water needs of the community and the various options in providing water. And so this environmental impact report is considered a subsequent environmental study from that water master plan EIR. It basically is determined that is used as a tiering document, a tiering process. So we tier from the master environmental impact report, and this is called a subsequent environmental impact report. A lot of terminology, a lot of jargon, if you will, in terms of the environmental process, but please take a look at that introduction. It'll give you a better framework in terms of what this process is all about. So the process began in the springtime with a notice of preparation. So many folks commented on the initial process that was back in the springtime. There was a public scoping meeting at that time where we received testimony as we launched the environmental review process. And there's other citations in this chapter as far as the public review and where we're headed in terms of a final environmental impact report. The goal line, again, is the certification of that final EIR, and that's going to be before the board, once that document is ready. So again, there's other chapters, sections of this chapter in terms of the format, the responsible and trusting agencies. It's not just the community that is commenting. State agencies are also involved in this process. We anticipate comments and a continued dialogue with many of the state agencies. And then we incorporate by reference many of the county and other related documentation. So again, this gives you an idea as far as the structure of the process. There's an executive summary. It gives you a snapshot as far as location and project characteristics, in case you don't want to read the significant detail, which is in the next chapter. And that's the project description. So I'm going to turn this over to Rita and Bob to highlight the aspects of the project description, and we'll continue from that point.
Thank you, Glenn. For section three of the subsequent EIR, the draft EIR, it describes the location, of course. It's off of San Simeon Creek Road, which is north of town approximately two miles. It's inland from the state campground, so we have the Hurst-San Simeon State Campground. That's our neighbor immediately to the west of the project site. It's on the north side of San Simeon Creek, and it's adjacent to our San Simeon Creek well field, and also on property that was previously been used for wastewater disposal, and it's still used for our percolation ponds. Just a little background on that. Back in, when we were working with the Army Corps years ago, they did an alternatives analysis, and it was in this room where the different alternatives were discussed, and there was a waiting, they had dots on a chart, and some of you were probably here at that time, and they evaluated what was technically the most feasible alternative. And at that time, they identified a brackish water facility off of San Simeon Creek Road. So when the drought hit us really hard in 2014, and actually in late 2013, we got a notice from California Department of Public Health that you better start looking at, things are getting so gloomy in the state, and they sent us to all the water agencies, "Look at alternative water supplies and get ready, get yourself prepared." So we started thinking about that past report and how we could use what we already had in place. And so we used that brackish water as kind of a starting point to help develop the project that ultimately got built in 2014, which is our sustainable water facility. So that's just touching on a little bit of the history on that. But let me go to the next slide here so I can describe, I'll hold off on it for a second, just a little bit more on the project purpose. Of course, in 2014, for those who may not have been here, that's when we were in the peak of the drought. It was in January, late January of that year, that our board declared the water shortage emergency. We were very concerned that we were going to run out of water by the end of that year, late fall, early winter. You cannot 100% accurately determine when the next rainstorm is going to come when you're in that situation. Things were looking dire. There was talks about having, like, the National Guard partially using tanker trucks to supply water to the town. It was getting that dire in some of the projections we had. So we went forward with what was then called the Emergency Water Supply Project. It's then, since been renamed the Sustainable Water Facility, and that's what we have right now. We had six months to get that permanent and built back in 2014 under an emergency coastal development permit that was issued by the San Luis Obispo County. We accomplished that, and part of that same permit said, "You need to apply for a regular coastal development permit," which is what we did back then. We had, I think, within 30 days, as I recall, to apply for one. We started that application process. Questions were raised by the county at that time about environmental aspects that weren't fully addressed, so we knew we had to do some more environmental work, and you're seeing the culmination of that in this document, that we did the full-blown environmental impact report, the environmental analysis, to support that regular coastal development permit for this project. And our intention is, once we get that regular coastal development permit, that we can operate this facility whenever it may be needed, not necessarily be in a stage-three emergency, because right now, that same emergency coastal development permit says you can only operate this when you're in an emergency, a stage-three level emergency. And we'd like to be able to make the most of this facility because of the investment involved, and also to help offset future emergencies by running it earlier, if necessary, and running it outside of the time that you're in a stage-three. So that's the gist of the background. The main objective was to provide a reliable water supply and to have a supply during a drought, which it does. It does take water that is brackish water in nature. It's a combination of whatever might be in the creek underflow. That could be anything from zero to whatever might be flowing, depending on the weather and the time of year. It could be a little bit of seawater, that's the freshwater that flows out to the ocean is on top of a saltwater wedge that comes inland. So you have a little diluted seawater as you get deeper in that layer where that mixing occurs. And then it also has the treated wastewater effluent that's coming from the wastewater treatment plant. So all three of those sources are making up that brackish water. And so we treat it to a very high level, above what current drinking water standards are in a number of cases, and then we inject it into the ground near our potable wells. It travels two months roughly before it can be withdrawn by the same potable wells that we have out there, and then pumped into the distribution system for use. So that's the gist of the background of it. Some of the other objectives that it does provide, it actually does help protect the environment, and there's, and I'll show it in an illustration here in a minute. It does have some water that goes to the upstream end of the San Simeon Creek Lagoon, so it does protect habitat in that way. It does remove nutrients from the groundwater, so it helps reduce nitrates that are background levels, so it has some benefits in that regard. And there's a number of other objectives and benefits that we list in this chapter that you might be interested in reading. Let me go to the next slide and start pointing out what I was just talking about. But the same section talks about phasing and construction agreements, permits, and approvals. But here's the, what is out there right now, and hopefully I get this pointer working properly here. Let me stand a little differently. So what we have, this is San Simeon Creek Road. Here's Highway One. The campground area is here. And when we developed this project, we wanted to reuse as much of our existing facilities as we possibly could. So we have an extraction well here. This used to be a gradient control well, and we placed, we used that to pull our water, our source water out. We have an advanced water treatment plant that was placed here. It's a containerized type approach where most of the facility was built off-site. The containers were shipped on a flatbed truck and placed on concrete footings. There's a few transfer tanks in between them that are set on grade on a concrete pad and some pumps. And I'll get into that a little bit further later, but this is our well field up here. We have three of our San Simeon wells here. We have SS1, 2, and 3. We have a reinjection well here, which is part of the new project. That was the earliest part of the project that was built. Water gets injected here, travels underground, and is pulled up either SS2 or SS1, and that's where we get our travel time. The facility, the advanced water treatment facility, has microfilters at the start of it. Then it has three stages of reverse osmosis. Then it has an advanced oxidation process at the end before it's put into a product water tank and pumped to that reinjection well. The facility was designed to fit entirely on the CCSD property. Again, we had a very short time to build this on, so that was one of the constraints that affected the design. The reason, one of the reasons it has three stages of IO is to reduce the amount of flow that is a byproduct of the reverse osmosis process. So we have about a 92% recovery rate, which means of the water that's pumped into it, 92% of that water is recovered and used as product water. We have the remaining 8% goes to this evaporation pond. This used to be a wastewater storage pond. It got modified to be used for evaporation. So that was called the Van Gordon Reservoir at one point in time on some of the old drawings. So we said, "We'll just put that there and evaporate it." And there are mechanical evaporators that are along the side here to help accelerate that evaporation process. So what, so in the document, you'll see three basic alternatives laid out. You'll see the project that was built. You'll see this one, which I'm about to explain, which is the project with modifications, and there's also a no-project alternative. So the one with the modifications, oops, sorry. We are addressing some of the impact concerns by the modifications, and we're also improving reliability even further. What we're doing is taking this evaporation pond and repurposing it to a stored raw water pond. That will address some of the impacts that we're concerned about with birds in particular. One of the mitigation measures we had was a netting system, which is going to be very expensive and questionable in effectiveness. So that steered us towards, why don't we just make this a stored water pond? And then instead of taking the IO reject water there, we're going to put a series of baker tanks next to the existing facility, which is shown right here. There'd be four baker tanks. So that 8% of the water would go into these baker tanks, and we'd have a water truck haul it offsite. It'd go either to a local permitted outfall, or else it'd go to the Kettleman Hills facility, which is a worst-case scenario, which is what was analyzed in the report as a worst-case scenario. The other feature that's going on here is that we're taking a pipeline from a well, SS1, and routing it over next to the existing facility and putting a containerized surface water treatment plant. That allows the water from the storage pond to be treated here and pumped into the system. So we can run that in parallel with whatever is being pumped by, say, SS2 at the time, which, again, increases the reliability of the system. It also allows SS1 to run when it may otherwise be shut down because of its proximity to the creek. There's a, we can't currently operate that when there's water flowing in the creek within 150 feet of the well because of a surface water treatment rule that the state has implemented. So it addresses that. So these modifications are addressing the concern over the impacts of the pond, and there's also visual impacts to the campground that go away because we can take away the mechanical evaporators that were a source of frustration for some people that live down the road, that heard them, as well as the visual impacts to the campers here at the campground. So we're, the project with modifications does address the environmental issues while also making the facility even more reliable. I think that concludes my description of section three. Thank you.
My name is Rita Garcia with Michael Baker, as Bob and Glenn said, and I was tasked with serving as the project manager for the EIR. Thank you for coming out and participating in the project's environmental review process. And this morning, I'll just be briefly touching upon sections four through six of the EIR. Section, excuse me, four of the EIR is the basis of accumulative analysis. This section describes our approach to accumulative impacts. An accumulative impact is an impact that's created when the project's impacts are combined with those of other related projects. CECL allows two options to address accumulative impacts. One option is to rely on a list of past, present, and probable future projects with related impacts, and the other allowable approach is to rely on projections included in a local, regional, or statewide or the relevant planning document. The approach that we took in the CIR was more of a hybrid approach. We contacted the County of San Luis Obispo Planning Department, and they provided a list of over 200 related cumulative projects. We worked with the county to refine that list a little bit further. The vast majority of those related projects were minor interior modifications or minor exterior utility, infrastructure improvements, so those were excluded from the related projects. Ultimately, a refined list Ultimately, a refined list totaled 49 accumu- uh, related projects. And then we also used, uh, the Water Master Plan EIR's projections, uh, proposed, uh, infrastructure improvements throughout the districts, uh, throughout the district. So both of those approaches, uh, used a hybrid approach. So Section 5.0 of the EIR is pretty much the meat and potatoes of the EIR. And it includes the environmental impact analysis. And we identified seven environmental issue areas that we would be taking a closer look on. And those included aesthetics, air quality, uh, biological resources, cultural resources, hydrology and water quality, land use and planning, and noise. So Sections 5.1 through 5.7 of the ER, where the environmental analysis is contained, each of those sections for each environmental topical area was, included seven subsections. The first subsection was the environmental setting, and that is the baseline or existing conditions from which a project impacts are assessed. This project was unique in that we, uh, started the environmental analysis after the project was constructed, but at further direction from regulatory agencies as well as the county, the baseline condition is the condition that existed prior to the project's construction. Second subsection is a regulatory setting section, and that includes all of the laws, ordinances, regulations, and standards that the project is subject to compliance with. The third section is a summary of Water Master Plan EIR. And as Glenn mentioned, this is a tiered document, and we rely on the findings and conclusions of that, uh, Tier 1 Water Master Plan EIR. So this subsection summarized all of the findings and conclusions that were relevant to each topical area. Section 4 is the significance criteria, and that included all of the thresholds from which we analyzed, uh, the project's impacts. Section 4 is the impacts and mitigation measures. So for each of those thresholds, we analyzed the project's impacts, and those included the project's, uh, short-term construction-related impacts, long-term operational impacts, direct impacts, and indirect impacts. This subsection all included, also included mitigation measures to avoid or lessen the project's impacts. The sixth subsection was the accumulative impact section, and as I previously mentioned, the accumulative impacts were those that were created when we combined the project's impacts with those of other related projects. Finally, this, the seventh subsection is significant and unavoidable impacts. And those were the impacts that were concluded to be significant and unavoidable despite implementation of the mitigation measures that we recommended. So Section 6 of the EIR included the long-term implications, the significant environmental changes, uh, the growth-inducing impacts. The growth-inducing impacts evaluates the project's potential to, uh, foster either economic growth or population growth, and that considered both direct population growth, for example, a project that would, uh, include, uh, construction of housing, or indirect population growth, uh, a project that, such as, um, the proposed project that included, uh, infrastructure or, uh, key, uh, facility, uh, and utility improvements. And then finally, a section on energy and conservation. Section 7 of the, uh, project of the EIR was the alternatives to the proposed action. And, um, this takes into consideration, identifies a reasonable range of alternatives that are intended to avoid or lessen the project's impacts. It also took into consideration the objectives and purpose of the project, and which one of those alternatives could fulfill or at least partially fulfill those objectives. Uh, so we analyzed the no-project alternative, and this was a, really, a scenario that assumed what would have happened had the project never been constructed, and that's the sustainable water facility. The sustainable water facility without project modifications alternative assumed what would happen if the recommended project modifications that Bob described, which was the repurposing of the pond, the, uh, the disposal of the RO-concentrated offsite location? What would have happened had we not included those project modifications? And then finally, number 3, RO-concentrate ocean outfall disposal alternative. This alternative's considered, is considered, instead of disposing of the RO concentrate at the Kettelman landfill, which is what is assumed in the project's analysis, what the impacts would be if we disposed of the RO concentrate at an existing wastewater facility, an existing outfall. Uh, there is, uh, of several, uh, outfalls that were identified in this section, and our analysis approach in this section identified the furthest location, and the impacts were based conservatively on the furthest, uh, location for dis- uh, disposing of the RO Uh, Section 7, uh, this section, as Bob mentioned earlier, um, is that before the project began, there is a substantial research conducted on alternative water supplies. So this goes into detail about all of those alternatives that were considered but rejected, and why. And finally, Glenn, we'll, I'm gonna wrap up our discussion.
This last slide kind of repeats what I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, that we're continuing to receive public comments, public testimony. We're gonna transition in just a moment to the, uh, the testimony, uh, for today's meeting. We are receiving comments, the district is receiving comments through October 26th, so, um, please continue to review and offer, uh, any comments on the environmental analysis, any questions you may have, any qualifications, that's what we're after, uh, from this hearing, and then continuing over the next few weeks. And then we'll assemble a final environmental impact report, as I previously mentioned. So again, um, the so-called ground rules are, um, if you would like to offer testimony this morning, please fill out a comment card, which is in the back, uh, entry, and, uh, provide it to Monique. And, um, we'll, uh, we are recording this meeting, uh, obviously, uh, with, with the video and, and audio portion, as well as taking diligent notes. Um, and again, if you have any follow-up, uh, to reiterate your points or expand on your comments, please, uh, offer those in writing by October 26th. Thank you very much. Uh, and we'll, I'll turn over to Monique as far as, uh, those that have turned in the comment cards.
Okay. First, we have Paul Carlson.
Hi, good morning. I just have four, uh, brief, uh, comments. The first one is yesterday at the gym, I was talking to another Cambrian, and it came up, uh, in the conversation, "We need water." A positive impact of this project would be that it will provide water irrigation for our trees and shrubs, and most important, it will provide fire protection. The other three points I have very briefly, the project supports the San Simeon Lagoon, um, ecologically. It, um, will stop seawater intrusion. Seawater intrusion has been a problem in many parts of the country. Down in Los Osos has that problem. The project also will do an important thing, and that's recycle the, um, water that otherwise would be wasted.
Next, we have Crosby Schwartz.
Good morning. One thing that hasn't been discussed, uh, so far, uh, today is, is the cost of, of the proposed modifications. I know it's a little bit separate from the direct environmental impacts, but part of the CECL process is to explore alternatives and, and, uh, alternative modifications to the project. The public can't really evaluate the proposed modifications without knowing what it's gonna cost, because we, we know who's gonna pay for it. It's gonna be us. So I, at some point, I would like to see information about the cost of these, uh, project modifications to be supplied to the, to the public. Obviously, there's certain things that have been proposed, like the, uh, surface water treatment facility, that would be nice to have, but not absolutely necessary, and we need to know what the cost is to fully evaluate it. The, uh, one thing that, that I, that I like about the proposed modifications is the, the use of the water in the evaporation pond for firefighting purposes. Uh, we need to determine how much water it needs to be, remain in the pond, uh, for firefighting, because if you leave it in the pond for firefighting, obviously you can't use it to supply potable water. So that decision needs to be made too. But mainly, we need information about the cost to, to evaluate these, uh, the proposed
Okay. The final request is from Bob Casper.
Uh, that's my question, I guess I'll state it maybe in a different way. Uh, the EIR does a cost analysis of trucking all the, my understanding is there's this effluent, this leftover stuff. You put it in trucks, you drive it over to Kettelman City, you dump it off, you bring the truck back, you fill it up again, over and over again. If the plant were to run 24 hours a day, seven days a week. If the plant runs as is predicted on a more like nine to five or that kind of a deal, and we were able to use Moro Bay or some other close facility, uh, what would, if you have an approximation of that cost analysis, if Kettelman City was 100, what would Moro Bay or San Simeon or wherever the location is? Uh, do you, do you have an approximate number on that now, or is that something you can provide in the analysis? And I'm not asking for an exact number, but is it like 50%, 5%, somewhere in the middle between those two?
Well, I'll, I'll give it a shot here. Um, the, the purpose today's meeting is, is not a workshop setting, so we didn't come here for a dialogue, but your, your question's a good one, and I don't wanna dismiss it. We'll have to come out with some kind of separate response from this meeting afterwards to address your question properly. But, you know, it will be much less expensive if we can find a local outfall as opposed to going to the Kettelman Hills. I, I can't rate it 100 versus some other number.
Ask for a second.
But I, I, I appreciate your question. I think it's a really good one, and, uh, I appreciate all the comments for that matter. I think the cost is one of them that we're gonna have to.
Sure.
Provide more information on.
That seems to be one of the biggest issues of people in town, that, you know, "Oh my gosh, we're driving to Bend, Oregon and back every day," is one of the comments, which is totally true and fair. Uh, but if we can drive to Moro Bay a couple times and back, that seems a lot better. Thanks a lot.
Okay. We do have another one.
This is kind of a follow-up question to the point that this previous speaker just made. I've just returned from a trip to the arid parts of, uh, Southern Europe and Northern, um, Africa. Areas of the world which have a similar climate than we have. Almost all of them, whether it's, uh, Northern Morocco, or Southern Spain, or the islands in the Atlantic, do, uh, desal. They're, we, they're absolutely dependent on it. My question is, before we make any decision about trucking the effluent anywhere, could we get some kind of a technical answer to what effect does this effluent have if we returned it to the sea, just as they do in these other parts of the world? I believe I'm correct, that none of these places do, uh, what we're planning to do, that is truck it to a land use area, all of them return the effluent in one way or another to the sea. So I'd like to know before I make a decision, as a ratepayer and a taxpayer, what environmental impact that has.
Next is Laura Schwartz.
Okay. Laura Schwartz, Cambrian homeowner, uh, also on, on the appointed current, uh, BRP Reduction Committee, and then also the, uh, the Treasurer of the Forest Committee. Uh, the question I had in this, this EIR, I'm gonna make it short instead of all my notes here, but the question I had is on this environmental impact. Some of it's, you know, it's, it's taken after the mitigation and says that there's no significant, uh, impacts. The problem is, when you get to like the 4650 build-out, that's already an impact, uh, because right now we're at 3850. And so you're, you're doing mitigation already after the fact, you're not taking into consideration what would happen now. But the fact I wanted to put out, just so you know, okay, on the waitlist numbers, I'm not doing this all today. The part, what I wanna say is the majority of all these houses that are proposed to be built are in heavy forested areas. And just to put out the numbers, 312 of them are on Lodge Hill. 61 of them are in Special Projects 1. 15 of them are in Special Projects, 15 in Special Projects 1, 61 in Special Projects 2. That's a total of 388 houses that they wanna put directly into the forest. So that, that to me is a problem, because the mitigation doesn't even start up until you get to the 4650. So there's a really, a large impact there. The other thing is if you take the forested lots through the transferred development credits, and you shift them down to Marine Terrace, because now you have the ocean view, you've already got 81 numbers down there. Then if you shift a lot of the forested lots, waitlist numbers down there, now you have significant traffic and safety problems down there. So what do you do? You widen Ardis and Burton, that's gonna be another environmental disaster. Or do we take the emergency road that bisects the Fiscalini and make that into a permanent road? So what I'm asking is to look at what we're doing for an overall long-term impact of the environment in a lot of different ways.
Okay. That's the last request for public comment.
Is there anybody else who wants to give a comment while we're here? I want to give everybody the opportunity, if you're able to try, don't want to turn. Anybody else wanna? Glenn, I'll turn if I have any.
Okay. That's gonna conclude the, uh, the meeting for this morning, but it doesn't, does not conclude our process, as I've mentioned. Uh, we are receiving, we, the district, are receiving comments through October 26th.
I'm gonna estimate about 80 so far.
Again, thank you for joining us this morning.